Mr. Chairman, we're left.
Okay, welcome everybody in the audience and those online. This is Monday, December 16th. I'm going to call a meeting to order. It's time I please ask everyone to rise and follow me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everyone. Okay, at this time, I'll take, if there's no additions or changes to the agenda, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, there was one matter that Commissioner Mopin had emailed. I don't know if you had an opportunity to do that.
That this morning?
It was on Sunday or Friday.
There's a letter from, so the gentleman that was supposed to be here on the solid waste discussion, they were applying for a grant to the same grant that we applied for last time with the Forest Service to buy a grinder for all that woody debris up there. And they are asking if we would sign a letter of support. And I did not get that, to my knowledge. Let me look really quick.
Is there a rush? Does it have to be in by this?
Yeah, it's got to be in by Friday.
By this Friday?
Yeah. The only reason then.
So why don't we stick it down at the bottom?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Commissioner, discussion and its support letter for?
For the Humankind.
What's it called?
The Humankind.
For a grinder? We bring grinder.
Regenerative forest program.
So if you would like to make the motion adding that to the agenda?
Chairman, I would move that we add a draft letter of support for the Humankind group discussing the forest regenerative forest program for our wood biomass program.
Second. I've got a motion to approve the amended agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're going to get right into it. And these next items are all action items. The first is the meeting minutes of December 9th. Any additions or changes?
I did have a few changes that I sent to Douglas.
Commissioner Mopin, Chief Deputy Gabriel Nepp did make those changes and will be reflected in the minutes that Mr. Chairman has.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve these.
I would move that we approve the meeting minutes as amended for December 9th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to approve the December 9th meeting minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The next item up is also an action item. This is a reimbursement request for the Idaho Parks and Rec, two Idaho Parks and Rec for the skid steer and trailer purchase. And I believe this is from Recreation.
Larry, did we have that in our?
Huh?
This Ken doing this? Did we have that in our packet last week? Is that the one I asked about last week? No?
Couple of weeks ago. This a while back.
So Ken, are you doing this? Larry, are you doing this? Who's doing?
So we can get our money back.
This is just for the authorization to submit for reimbursement for the skid steer and the trailer.
And normally, we have those in our packets. So is that the one that we had last week, the week before?
It should have been for this week. That's when I had requested to be put in there. If it's not, I do have it for signature. I have a copy here to look at.
Why don't you come bring it to us to look at? I did not see anything.
See it in our packet, Ken.
There was one last week in the packet.
We went over a little bit, but there's nothing this week though.
I think it was in last week's packet.
Okay, so this is a total reimbursement request for $69,044.
That was in last week's.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, my apologies. It was in last week's packet. Was it already signed last week?
And the total price was $89,779. So the difference between these two is about, roughly about $20,000. Twenty thousand, seven hundred and...
Larry, that was our match coming out of ARPA funds. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now the second page to be where your signature goes.
Are you signing this?
Ken, or you can, doesn't matter. Me, any one of us can sign it. We need a motion for this. It's already been down. We approve this? I'm trying to remember what we did last week.
Sharon, there was no.
Did not approve it because we were over budget by 20. We decided to take that out of the remaining ARPA funds. Is that correct?
Larry, you had already put this into the ARPA.
Yeah, we budgeted for this.
He's got a certain amount in those ARPA.
So we need a motion to approve reimbursement request for IDP, two IDPR for the skid steer and trailer purchase. I make a motion that we approve the reimbursement. IDPR, skid steer and trailer purchase.
For the $69,044?
Second that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
It is on there. They crossed it out. And that was the only place, Ken, you just need one?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, our next agenda item is an action item. This is the 2019 version of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan for future grant applications. Mara, is there anything you want to add to this?
So this is just get the signature page signed again. In order for me to apply for this larger grant, I just couldn't find a signed version. So there's been no updates to this Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Our plan is still to update it next year. So it will be updated. I just need it for grants for this February 2nd.
Is this the $250,000 grant?
This, the grant that I want to apply for is anywhere from $50 to $10 million.
Oh, for the upper end.
My plan is to go for quite a few million dollars.
That's awesome.
But in order to do that, I need a signed copy. And I just can't find a signed copy.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve re-signing the 2019 version of the CWPP.
Second, a motion in a second to approve the CWPP 2019 version. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Did you bring with you? All good, come on up.
Doug, what was the other thing on the agenda?
Commissioner Mopin, I believe that was just a duplication.
Okay.
Because there was nothing added to the after the fact.
Okay, and then since you're up here, we'll go right on down. Our next agenda action item is an action item. This is the final jug reimbursement. Let's...
I'll write those or...
Oh, that's up for you guys. One hand. Why don't you lay this one out a little bit? This was $46,203.73. This is the final one. This was the chunk of ground kind of on the north side of the development.
Yep, so this is Jug, the last of the Jug grant for Stephanie. So she already put in a first reimbursement for $193,000 with McKenzie. And so this is just finalizing the $220,000 grant and closing it out.
I have a question on these. So when these reimbursements come back in, since Mara is now an employee and we're running all these through the general ledger, can I go back to Title III funds?
No. So this is IDPR grant. And this is not, Title III money has not been used. That's the, this is specifically for the IDPR grant. So that money is just received it back into the general fund.
Okay, so it does just go through general?
It does.
Okay, all right. And I thought we had some more money to play?
No, none of this comes out of Title III.
I was trying.
Yep.
She's talking $20 million. I was thinking.
No, that would be a separate account to it if I applied for that.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the final jug reimbursements for the 20WFM for $46,203.73.
Second, who did second it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Can't believe it's December.
I know it went fast.
Year went fast. Okay, the last item on this particular agenda is the, is an action item. This is a support letter that we added to the agenda this morning to Humankind Group and Forester Company.
So we are going to have a white paper from these, this company, hopefully this week, if not next week. I told them it was urgent to get it. And this is on the new potential for waste management and how we could, they will help us recycle our waste products instead of just putting everything into the landfill. This is one portion of that. So they are actually going after funding to provide a grinder in order to help grind our woody biomass. If we decide to move forward with this, then they would apply for this, or the grants are already applying for.
Do we be the owners and take over maintenance and everything of it? Or who would?
That's up for discussion. So they're actually applying kind of in advance, if you will.
On our behalf?
Yeah. But they own these sites, lease waste sites. I mean, they, it's, it's all open discussion once we get there. But I anticipate having that, a full discussion in January or February on this.
That'd be good.
But we don't want to miss the opportunity for this grant if there's any way that they could potentially help us with that woody biomass so we don't have to burn it. So this is just one.
So this is not for household trash? This is just for woody biomass?
Correct.
So would this be like a county-owned grinder? Or would we contract with this company like we do now to come up and do it? What is your thinking there?
It's open for discussion. That's, right now, they're applying for the grant. It's kind of on our behalf. But we'll have that full discussion January, February with them. They own sites for transfers. They own waste management sites. They lease them. So that's part of their discussion with us. But this is something that they would like to apply for to help with the woody biomass. This is that same grant that we applied for when we got the $250,000.
Oh, that's right. Well, and just so the public knows, I think last year we spent a little over $200,000, probably more than that, to grind our woody debris last year instead of burning it. So long-term, it may be a solution. And we have the support letter here. I just kind of bruised it. I guess, see what happens after we get it. From there, I'd entertain a motion to approve the support letter.
And I will have to redo this. And this afternoon, I will have it available for signatures.
On County Letterhead.
On County Letterhead, yeah.
So let's go ahead and make the motion to approve it.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the support letter for the Forest Regenerative Forest Program and the Humankind and Forester Company group will be applying for that.
Second. You've got a motion in a second to approve the support letter to Humankind for a woody debris grinder. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Doug, thank you for the reminder on that.
Very well. Yeah, our next agenda item is an action item. These are tax cancellations. Two, come on up. Been looking at these through the weekend. It looks like three of them were just licenses.
Park models.
Park models.
They decided to register towards the end of the year prior to the 4th of May in November. So we have to cancel the taxes on those three.
The one that is not, 2402, which I don't see on the agenda, have a different number?
It looks like they were labeled incorrectly on the agenda. You'll have to look at the cancellation numbers in the attachments. So cancellation 2402 is the one that is not the park model registration.
Let's do the other three that are similar. And then we can come back and talk about this one. Okay, go ahead.
All right, so commissioners, I am here today to ask you for a tax cancellation, 2403, 2404, and 2405. Like you mentioned, these are all park models that were registered after the assessed values were sent to the state and the levies were calculated. So these individuals paid tax through the DMV, and we need to cancel their taxes. The amount of cancellation for 2403 is $192.38. 2404 is $236.42. And 2405 is $134.71. If you have any questions about the process, Assessor Sue Lieber is here to answer those.
Good. I'm good too. Until the state figures out what those creatures are, we're just going to have to live with it. Decided at the legislative site. So if you guys are good with this, I'd entertain a motion to approve these three park model tax cancellations. Make a motion that we approve the cancellations for 230, 2403, 2404, and 2405.
A second.
A motion in a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now we'll go back to the first one. This was, wrong house was drawn on the, on this parcel.
So this house was actually on Lot 7. It is correctly on Lot 7 now. And the, that house was also drawn on Lot 6 in an error. So we have the correct house drawn on Lot 6 now. And we need to cancel the difference in the value between the two homes. So everything is correct now. We just need to write it Lot 6 for, well, $473,029 in value. And the amount of tax to be canceled would be $1,128.09.
So I guess my question is, why did the value of the house go down on a different parcel?
Because there was a different house on Lot 6 that was just a lesser value. And so this is the difference in value between the two homes that we're asking you to cancel.
Oh, I see, okay. Everyone good with this one? Yep, I make a motion that we approve the cancellation of, now, my 2402 or 2406?
2402.
2402. There a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve this tax cancellation. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries, going up.
Man, I just read it on the agenda incorrectly. It's supposed to be 2402, is that correct? Okay, thank you. You know if the parcel is correct? The parcel's correct, thank you.
All right, there we go. Anything else? Real good, thanks. Have a great day.
Please.
Okay, we're going to move on to our next agenda item. This is also an action item. This is a discussion and a decision on interacting with the American Lands Council regarding the latest US Supreme Court case, Utah versus the United States. This was an idea that has been kind of promoted for the last year or so through American Lands Council. We've definitely received a lot of emails this weekend, some for, most against. And I'm not sure where this is going to go or if it's going to do any good one way or the other. It looks like there's a lot of folks here in the audience that would like to speak to this.
We didn't schedule this as a public hearing.
We not scheduled it as a public hearing. I understand that. But I still feel like we need to kind of take in consideration the folks in the audience. Do you want to explain this one?
Sure. So this is simply a discussion. First of all, to file an amicus brief, all of that has already passed as far as timing. So we absolutely cannot participate as an amicus brief. So this is a discussion on how we learn to communicate better with our federal partners and how they learn to communicate better with our communities. So the, the reason that this came about in Utah, Utah has a very strong department that has resource management plans. Each one of their communities write a plan that shows how they would like to partner together on federal ground and state ground. And within that, FLIPMA specifically says, the Federal Land Management Planning Act specifically says that the federal government is to communicate with the local commissioners of those counties. That's not happening in our country right now. And it hasn't happened for quite some time. And so our federal partners are not listening to the voice of the people that live within these counties. And the best example of that is Lava Ridge. And I think that's why this has come to such a high degree right now is because the BLM, just absolutely with the disapproval of every elected official in Idaho and the citizens of that county, went ahead and approved it. That's not collaborative work with our local partners. We don't want that to happen to us in Valley County. Wyoming has now, they have adopted what's called the Resource Management Plans. There are templates out there. There's all types of information, how they want to partner with our federal partners. And they're not being listened to either. So states are getting frustrated with, hey, this is within our boundaries. We control this. Some of the misinformation, I think, that went out in the email that we all received was that we were pushing or someone's pushing to make these state endowment lands. That is not true. State does not have to make these endowment lands. If any of this were to go back to the state, it would be state-held lands. Yes, they can do what they want. But would you rather be communicating with me in front of you, allowing you guys to come in and talk with us and have local control? Or even at the State House, which is two hours away from us? Or do you want all control to be in the federal government? That's a question. Valley County is currently starting the process to write a resource management plan. We are going to cite FLIPMA. We are going to cite the federal obligations that are required to speak with our local leaders, our local officials. We all know right now that our forests are not being managed to the highest degree that we'd like them to be. We are very excited that we have a firewise management plan and that the forest, what is it, Mara? The National Forest Foundation, NFF, just received a $21 million grant to come in and help clear our forests. That's going to help us a lot. We've been asking for this for the, I've been on the board for five years. We have been asking for this. Actually, we've been more forest mitigation work for quite some time. I love our local guys. They're great guys to work with. They are given direction out of DC, and they struggle with trying to manage the forest. They know that. So this is just a conversation about how do we best partner with our federal partners? There was a large conversation also, and I know that, I did read, I hadn't even known that Idaho had, the Attorney General had written a letter of amicus brief. One of the things I agree with, though, we constantly get talked to in Idaho about the fact we don't put money toward education. Idaho is 67% federally owned. So we don't receive the property taxes that the states do in the east. That's why they have so much more money. The money that Idaho gets has to actually be put on the ground to take care of the people that are here. So all of us can talk together with our federal partners. We have to go back east every year and beg for the payment in lieu of taxes money and also for secure schools funding. Those are legislative obligations that we receive some benefit to having federal lands in our state. We do receive benefit through the fact that it's recreation. These are our open spaces. Valley County is 92% open space through federal and state land. That's a lot of land to go out and recreate on. And we can all appreciate that. But it also has to be maintained, and that costs us. So our taxes are higher because we don't receive the financial obligation that the government is mandated through Congress to give us. We go fight for it every year. That's another thing we can have a conversation about. Why do we have to go fight for it? It should be an in line item in the budget. So education, yes. We don't spend as much on it in Idaho. We don't receive the funding that we need also because of the federal land that's here and the fact they don't always pay their, their share of that. So this is all just part of a discussion about how do we partner with our federal agencies that own so much of where we live? Because we have very little voice.
Really, you did it very good.
I have been engaged in this conversation. This is not something that we take lightly here. A lot of people don't understand that your commissioners are your partners with all the federal agencies. We meet with the Forest Service two, three times a year. We try and stay involved in every conversation. We do consider them to be our partners. For five years, I have spent a lot of time working with our federal partners, finding out what works, what's broken, what doesn't work. And it's frustrating. We're just trying to figure out what is it that we do to broaden that conversation, but also to hold people accountable to working with us. We do need to collaborate. They own a lot of our ground. And so it's, how do we best partner with our federal government? This resource management plan that we're working on, this is going to be done throughout the state. Each one of the counties are now being engaged. I chair the Public Lands Committee for the state of Idaho. We're talking to every county. How do you want to work with your federal partners? How do you want your resources to be maintained? That's a conversation that we should have. And I encourage all of you to please engage in this conversation because we will be having public outreach on this. I'll make sure that it's well documented and well advertised of when you can participate with this. But this is a way that we solidify in writing, this is our expectations of how you're going to partner with us at a local level. That's really what's driving this lawsuit, is states are frustrated over no conversations with their federal government. And Lava Ridge is a perfect example. Randy, I know you put in the email that they communicated too late with their community. Boy, howdy. And, and honestly, we get the same kind of stuff. People come into our communities, they want to come, I'm not going to even talk about names, but we had a large partner step into our community and start making decisions for us and not with us. And I didn't appreciate it. If you're going to come here, our citizens should know what's happening. Your local elected officials should know what's happening before they start making decisions for us. And so those are, those are conversations we can have. I'm happy to listen to anybody that wants to stand up and tell me, you know, where, where I'm wrong, where we need to strengthen the conversation, how you would like to interact with this conversation.
Sure, one question that I just want to clear that from all the letters that I've read from everybody, seems to be misunderstanding of ownership versus management.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not talking about changing ownership. They're talking about management. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's what I thought. So they won't, even if we took back management and control of, say, the BLM, feds still own it. That will have to go through Congress well after all of us are gone for them to give back the land to the states like they did the other 38 states. This has nothing to do with ownership. This is strictly management and control of the BLM by what the lawsuit was talking about. So if anybody, just to clear that up, they aren't, they aren't going to relinquish ownership of nothing. Feds will not do that. But can we take back management and control? We can if it's a viable thing and it's good for this county. But lots got to happen before we even go there.
And we could possibly manage it.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, and I agree, but there needs to be partnerships and they're not, they're blowing us off, kind of like they blow off the people at Lava Ridge. We can't allow them to run roughshod over our land anymore. And I'm on board for whatever it takes to stop them from running roughshod. They have to work with us. That's what we, the people of Valley County, are going to demand. This last fire season, I don't even want to get on that soapbox. I was pretty upset with the way they handled things. Because now they won't log the timber, they'll talk about it and put it on some assessment or some, you know, requirement, NEPA, and by the time they get around and saying, oh yeah, we'll log it, the timber's rotting, it's no good. I don't have any time for that nonsense. That's a natural resource that we should take seriously out there on our forests. So it's a hot topic. I get it. And I would like to hear a few comments from you folks. I know most of you gave us, already gave us your comments, and I appreciate that. But if some of you feel like you want to get up and speak, please, I'll let Chairman Hasbrook maintain that one.
I think this has been a really interesting process, especially for me over the last 12 years, because we've worked arduously, built up all these coalitions, the Boise Forest, the Paya Forest Coalition. We tried to instill a lot of our ideas into their management plans and it just never seems to happen. And, you know, to me, what's upsetting the most about me is the deal that was made for Pilton SRS. Over the years, that fund has gotten less and less and less. And the deal was because they're supposed to pay relatively the same amount of tax, property taxes as private timber landowners. And I know in my case, my good class timber is about $1.65 an acre. And right now with the Pilton, the SRS, we're receiving, it's only about 26 cents an acre we get from the feds. So there's a big disparity there. We need that revenue to run governments, to run our schools, to run our trash. And it's interesting, because I've talked to some of the leadership in the Forest Service and some of them feel like we need to join this council to push this issue forward, to stir up Congress to do something to fix the issue. And I don't know if anybody saw the news this morning, but the Forest Service budget is about $1 billion in the deficit. And they're actually talking about introducing a reduction in force for this next year's workforce. That's the issue, is they don't have the money, they don't have the staff to do the work, do the, even set up a logging job, you don't have those kind of people on staff anymore because they've been undercut over the years. And this, I think it goes back to the federal deficit, we can't afford to do all these things. And so we're saying, hey, let's push the issue forward and maybe scare some folks into, we got to do something here. And I think that's, to me, is the main reason why I'm supporting this is because, you know, you keep making the same mistake over and over and over, you get what you get. And we've been doing that for 12 years. I belong to the Idaho Rulers' Rules Commission and we get an inventory every year of all the forests in Idaho and what their plans are for the next year. And their plans right now, throughout next year, for the whole state of Idaho, is they plan to do 550,000 acres of controlled burns. And that's it. There's any logging jobs, there's any kind of management, especially in this area, because we don't have the mills that can take it anymore. And so we're going to have smoke all year long. It's going to get to where, just like last summer, we're just going to be living in smoke all spring and all fall when they do these burns. I don't think that's a good way to do stuff. There are so many other opportunities for that material, we just got to be more inventive and more progressive on how we deal with some of these forests. But it's because the Forest Service doesn't have the funds to do anything. So we need to shake the tree. And I think this is going to shake the tree, hopefully, and maybe it'll come back to where, through the GNA, through the state, which we've already had great practice in, a lot of things for GNA, we can expand that program so the state doesn't own it, but it manages it. It helps get some kind of revenue source off that big chunk of ground. The other thing that to keep in the back of your mind is only about 6% of Valley County land pays property taxes. You think about that, we're making, we're chasing everybody out that can't afford to pay their taxes. And that's going to catch up with us down the road where people can't afford to live here because 6% has to pay all the costs to run infrastructure. That's got to change. And I don't know else to do it. So my feeling is we need to go forward with this, see where it goes, maybe it'll build some management cooperation with the state and even with our local officials where we can do a lot of stuff as far as community wildfire protection zones and woody debris and that kind of stuff. But we've got to figure out a different way to approach this. And this is just one idea, there's lots of other ideas involved as well. But I'm going to let anybody in the audience that wants to come up, I'm going to try and limit it to three minutes, we don't want to be here all morning. I want to hear your side. You state your name and just the town you live in, I don't need your address.
Representative Fay Thompson. I represent District 8, which is Valley County, Custer County, and Boise County, and Elmore County for the state of Idaho. The biggest thing that Commissioner Mopin mentioned was the communication and the lack thereof. I remember, and you can clarify this, Commissioner Mopin, about there was an agency meeting held at Brundage Mountain where you found out about it by accident and you went and attended. And they actually stated that they did not want Adams County Commissioners to be present. That's definitely a lack of communication between agencies, between federal agencies and county commissioners. That's offensive to me. And the other thing is, like with the fire situations that we had, Valley, Custer, and Boise Counties burned bad this year. And when Incident Command comes in and they're only here for two weeks and then they're changed out again, that's bad management, period. You bring in an Incident Command, you leave them on the fire instead of having these big teams of 30 to 100 people come in every two weeks to manage a fire, they don't, they barely get their ducks in a row before they're sent to another area. So these kinds of conversations have to happen. We have got to do better. And if it takes the states taking over management of our federal lands and doing management the way the state does, because we know for a fact statewide, the state does a better job. They clean forests, they keep the brush down. If they do a controlled burn of 35 acres, it's 35 acres, period. They stop it at 35 acres. And that's the way they operate. And that is how we need to have it done from here on. So I would be in favor personally. If I were in your seats, I would be in favor of looking at being a part of this lawsuit that Utah has started. We've got to make a change because we cannot have these fires and this mismanagement continue because we're going to lose everything. And thank you.
Fay, anyone else? Honest be just and fear not.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to submit some public comments. My name is Jack Hurdy. I'm here representing the Idaho Outfitters and Guides Association, or IOGA. IOGA is a nonprofit business trade association established in 1954 in Salmon, Idaho, representing and advocating for outfitters and guides from all sectors statewide and dedicated to the conservation of and the enhancement of quality outdoor experiences with Idaho's lands, waters, and wildlife. The IOGA has a rigorous process for establishing formal positions of the association with the most robust expression in the form of a membership resolution. I'd like to make it clear at the outset that while we have not yet taken a formal position on this issue, our membership is currently in the final days of voting on a draft resolution which expresses staunch opposition to the transfer of public lands as proposed in Utah, VUS, and amicus brief submitted by AG Labrador. Early indications, as well as member outreach, suggest that that resolution will pass. Today, I will be sharing our concerns as expressed by our members and through the resolution process. Outfitting and guiding is a major driver of Idaho's economy, in particular, its rural economy, it's not least here in Valley County. Modeling conducted by the Idaho Department of Commerce, supported by analysis conducted by an external firm for IOGA, established the contribution of Idaho's outfitters and guides at approximately $1.1 billion per year. As a whole, the outdoor recreation industry's annual impact has been measured at approximately $7.9 billion, making it a top three contributor to Idaho's economy. Key foundation of that economic contribution is reliable access and effective, stable management of our public lands. Any significant disruption of the management of public lands threatens that foundation, creates uncertainty and risk for outfitters, and could damage Valley County's economy in the process. The uncertainty of any public land transfer is a serious source of concerned outfitters, guides, and the outfitted public. There's no precedent for how such transfer would be executed and there are significant legal questions around Idaho's ability to take ownership of those lands, given the explicit disclaimer of title in our state's constitution. Even if Idaho were to take ownership or takeover management, it is unclear which state agency would be responsible. At present, Idaho Department of Land seems to be the most likely candidate. Were this to be the case, IDL's constitutional mandate to maximize revenue from its endowment lands, as well as its inadequate background in human infrastructure, could jeopardize access, opportunity, and current uses on Idaho's public lands, creating chaos for outfitters and other special use permit holders. For instance, it's unclear how permits would be managed or transferred, who would administer them, and with what institutional expertise or knowledge. How might conditions of use, fees, taxes, or even the number of permits change? Additionally, we do not know how IDL would respond as an agency to the new demands placed on it. And it is possible that without the necessary financial or operational resources, the agency would be unable to adequately manage these lands. IDL's constitutional obligation to maximize revenues could reasonably result in more lands being developed, privatized, or open for extraction, drastically limiting recreation opportunities and harming the local economy. History shows us since its founding, Idaho has sold off a significant percentage, I believe over a third of its state lands. We cannot afford to risk the economic and cultural value that our public lands provide. At IOGA, we urge the Commissioners to consider these points and consider the effects that Utah, VUS, and any ensuing legal cases would have on Idaho's outfitters and guides. Thank you.
Yeah, Chris, can I get your first name?
Jack.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, thank you very much. I'm Randy Fox, representing the Idaho Conservation League with offices in McCall. I've already submitted comments to you and I appreciate you taking the time to read those from myself, as well as many others that have submitted them. What I would speak to this morning comes to a common theme that I heard today from all three of the Commissioners, and that's the lack of resources from the federal land management agencies and lack of budget, lack of funding. And the, I think the key to that is where does that funding come from? And that funding is approved and put forth by our congressional representatives. And so I would put forth that part of this conversation has to extend out to them and to put more pressure on, and this is what I heard, that our senators and congresspeople need to hear from county representatives, as well as American citizens, that this is a priority and that the monies need to be allocated to these agencies so they can properly manage the lands that they're responsible for. And I would recommend that we continue those conversations, that we work together to pressure Senators Crapo and Risch and Representatives Folcher and Simpson to make sure that these agencies are adequately funded and that these budgets and Pilton payments don't keep going down and they're actually at a level that allows for responsible management. Thank you very much.
Ready?
Ready.
Anyone else? This is not a public hearing, it's just to remind you that this is on YouTube and is recorded.
Angela Stopp from McCall. I know this isn't a public hearing, I still felt it was important to come down, as did my mom, just to show that we're here. We want to engage, we want to listen. I believe that's how a lot of us feel. A lot of us didn't expect to have the opportunity to speak, so thank you. As Randy said, we, well, not as he said, but what I take from that is, I feel like we are going after the wrong thing. We've acknowledged federal government isn't able to have the funding to do what they need to do. There are amazing people who work for the federal government. There are people who dedicated their lives to it. And they are so passionate about being in these spaces and making it work. But if they don't have the funding, they can't do their job. Whereas we do have Representatives and Senators who aren't supporting that mission. I would like to reiterate what Randy was just saying. We need to get them to support what we believe is our lifestyle, what we value about Idaho. Going after the federal government isn't maybe the best way to do that when it's our own people that aren't supporting it. So I would just really like, I want to be part of the conversation. I'm grateful for this opportunity to speak. Obviously, I'm very passionate about it, I wasn't really planning on speaking, but I do have concerns. I spend a lot of time outside. I also spend a lot of time volunteering. Spend a lot of time, I volunteer in EMS and in fire, I volunteer on boards. I've had to recently step back because I'm spending so much time volunteering, trying to make a difference. I sit on both sides of issues, I try to listen. I want to do what's best for our people and I want to help. So I appreciate that you're going to make it very well-known and public so that we can continue to engage. I know a lot of people wanted to come, a lot of us were up at 3:00 AM doing snow removal again. You know, luckily I was able to take time off and come down. So I really appreciate being able to speak and I hope that we can go after what actually needs to be done instead of going after the people that are already getting slammed, the people who are already getting undercut. And that maybe we can get more of our state people on board to do what's right for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. You had so many behind you.
That's okay, no worries.
Hi, I'm Deborah Stopp, thank you for letting us speak. No, I was not prepared to speak, I was just coming to listen. But being an old time resident here, longer than, I care to count, you know. Anyhow, listening to what was said today, I think one of the biggest things that's happened is, as you were saying, a true lack of communication. A lot of us in my age group that have been here for 50 or more years, kind of felt like we got a little blindsided about what we're reading in the paper and all of a sudden this lawsuit, and we're going, what? And so we're shocked that it has gotten to this point and we really didn't know that much about it. You have a lot of people out there willing to work to try to make something happen. I think we need more education, I think we need more communication before we go jumping off into a big lawsuit. There's a lot of unanswered questions, you brought up points that, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. And it's not like I live in La La Land, because people that do know me know I get involved and I have no problem, you know, writing letters and whatever. I mean, I still write to our Congressman in Washington and will continue to do so. But it has to start here, this is the grassroots, right here. And you need to work here. We all need to find some sort of common ground and get on the same page and not get shell shocked that, what are you talking about? Because no, I don't want our public lands to all of a sudden end up in whatever entity's hands and end up being privatized and the next thing we know, we don't have it. So I really think we need to slow down, look at what's going on, and somehow get everybody back on board because a lot of people were caught off guard. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Deborah. Okay, thank you, Deborah.
Chairman, do we want to limit?
No, I think we're done. I think we need to move on. We've got a lot more stuff on our agenda. This was not set up as Commissioner Moppa stated earlier. There's going to be more hearings, more meetings on this. I think we need to do a better job to explain our intent as far as how the county feels about this. It's not that we're here to give the government... Make the government sell its land or give its... That's not it. It's the management of the federal lands that... And not just Forest Service, and not just Bureau of Rec, and not just BOM, but all of them together. And I think, you know, hopefully, down the road in the future, that Sherry and her group can come up with a little better communication on what our intent is. But I just know that if the definition of stupidity is keep doing the same thing over and over and over, and that's where we're at now. And we need to figure out some way to move the bubble, one way or the other, so...
I'd like to point you all, there is a template for Resource Management Plan. The one that we have found, this group that's working on it, the Wyoming Association of Counties, has a template on their website. I would encourage all of you to go and look at that. I suspect that that's going to be the template that we're going to be following. So after the holidays, I'm actually meeting on it this week, but after the holidays, this will be something that we will start on in earnest. There's also, and I would invite all of you to attend, Boise State University is currently working with the county on doing a hazard resiliency project. And so that hazard resiliency project is also based on resources and how we recover in the event of a forest fire, a flood, those types of things. How do we save our economy? How do we save our region? And so please engage also in any opportunities. We will be having public hearings on that also starting in January. So two things right now, that we're talking about our natural resources and how we protect Valley County and our economy as we move forward, so...
So Sherry, is there a time date you have to have this letter in?
We'll pass the time. We can't engage on Amicus.
So we didn't even need to vote on this this morning?
Nope.
Everybody understand that? Kind of missed the boat there. But I think it's a good way to hope the bear, see if we can get something going different in our public lands.
And so, you know, everybody knows here, February 1st to March, all three of your commissioners are going to Washington DC to meet with our congressmen and senators and all those guys. This is very large on all of our number-one things to talk about. Our federal lands, public lands, which are our lands, all of our lands. We are the federal government. But back east, those 38 states, they don't see us at all. They don't understand what we are up against. And we're all very tired of being run over by an entity that doesn't care. It's accountability, and that's all we're asking for. It's some accountability so that we can all be working off the same sheet of paper and that we understand what this side's doing and this side's doing. So we all understand. We're tired of this. And we understand your frustration. This is big frustration. It really is for me. I've hunted and fished and everything needs mountains all my life. I don't want that taken away. I lost enough roads. My good friend back there, Larry, we serve on different recreation things. We've seen enough roads decommissioned and just destroyed because they don't have enough money in their budgets to maintain anything. And so there's going to be some discussion back there, and I hope it's progressive. I hope it's productive. We will see. So thank you, folks, for your time.
Thank you for coming down and participating.
Just so everyone knows, just so knows for sure, because this letter's too late, we're not going to take any kind of vote today on this. But I think there's going to be a lot more coming down the road. Thanks, everybody, for coming in. Appreciate the drive down. Have a good day. I think we're going to take about, let's just say, an eight-minute break, and we'll be back about after. Okay, I think it's still a wise investment, Amelia. I think it's a great that we need to finish it off and complete it. A question for Doug, did we take that out of?
General Fund Reserve, Mr. Chairman.
That's what I thought.
We need to take it out of pill, Doug.
We still have funding in General Fund Reserve. If you may utilize that.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve up to $10,000 for the historic research on county roads.
Second it. Motion is second to authorize $10,000 out of the General Fund Reserve to continue Amelia's contract, I guess, if you want to call it, a research project for Valley County. Motion is all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you for all your work on this.
Yeah, great job.
So Amelia, is this the road that's going up Council Mountain Road? Is this encompassing that?
Yeah. She's already got that researched on the FAA road. Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. Amelia, this is Commissioner Hasbrook. I guess my question is, where did you guys come up with the 1863 date? Was that some of the earliest records? That's really interesting. Okay, thank you very much. Looking forward to hearing from you.
What needs to come out of Larry's project?
Thanks, Amelia. Larry, you around back then? Nothing, I was just asking if you were around back then.
That was two days after my birthday.
Two days after your birthday? Okay, we're going to move on. We've got lots more to do this morning. These are all action items. First one up is the final plot for Timber Harvest, or Timber Haven subdivision, excuse me, Cinna. And this should be in your packet if you need.
And I had some questions on this one. They don't have any of the dates on them. I mean, none of these documents are filled out on this one, which is really different than most any of them I see.
Well, we don't do that until they're recorded. You're talking about like the CCNRs and stuff?
Oh.
Yeah, the CCNRs, I mean, we don't fill in the date until they go down to record.
Oh, I see. I don't see Timber Haven on here.
Yeah, we have them all marked where we have to fill in. That's a time of recordation.
She sent two packets. She sent two different packets?
Oh, four.
Sent two different packets. Two emails that came from Gabby. I'm wondering too, so on the notary signature that Candace did, she only used her first name, not her last name. Is that a viable? Gabby, do you know? Is that viable and still?
Which document are you talking about?
The CCNRs, I have her full name.
That's her signature.
Not the CCNRs. It's one she had to notarize.
It's what?
It is the utilities declaration. She printed it. She just put the notary acknowledgement, just Candace, and she'd actually done it incorrectly to start with. And we marked it out and changed them. I mean, none of the declarations. So you're going to make sure that every one of these is filled out before this is recorded.
Yeah, we don't know the book and page yet until we go down to record.
Here it is.
Your signature is signed.
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure it's legal before we adopt it.
And you have the motion for this?
I do. Chairman, I move to approve the final plot for Timber Haven subdivision, acknowledge the sanitary restrictions are satisfied, except for Lot 1, which will not receive a building permit for a residential unit until they are satisfied, and Lots 3 and 8, which are not approved for residential use. Acknowledge the shared driveway and utility easements as shown on the plot. Acknowledge the Wildland Urban Interface Fire Protection Plan. Validate Timber Haven Place as a private road, which we deeded to Timber Haven HOA LLC after recording of the plot and would be listed in the official road name list and on the official road maps. Approve the variance for a traveled road width from 20 feet to 24 feet to accommodate road grade, existing corridor, and decrease in treble removal per PNC Commission recommendation. Accept the declaration of installation of utilities for Timber Haven subdivision. Accept the owner's declaration of a private road for Timber Haven subdivision. Acknowledge the declaration of protective covenants, conditions, and restrictions, and authorize the chairman to sign the final plot. This motion is made with the understanding that Timber Haven Place is a private road and Valley County has no responsibility here thereto.
Second it. Here we go, our motion and a second to approve the Timber Haven final plot with the following recommendations. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Which one are we doing next?
Tamrac.
Tamrac on here.
They were just changing a bunch of the layouts of the buildings.
This one, they approved it what was actually constructed and added one.
It was more of an ass build.
Yeah. And added one residence.
Who's that one?
I didn't see anything in the Tamrac Resort one either. Is there anything we need to be aware of, Cinna?
Excuse me?
Is there anything in the Tamrac one we need to be aware of? I didn't see anything.
It's cleaning up stuff.
Nobody has any questions?
Okay, so let me announce it first and then we'll find it.
It's in the regular packet.
What's in the regular packet? Hold on, our next agenda item is an action item. This is the final plot for the Village Plaza Condos at Tamrac Resort. And we'll ask for a motion.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the Tamrac Resort amended Village Plaza condominium. Oh, and I, okay, and I move to approve the final plot for Tamrac Resort amended Village Plaza condominium, acknowledge and a statement of declarance rights for Tamrac Resort Village Plaza condominiums. Acknowledge the second amended and restated supplemental declaration for Tamrac Resort Village Plaza condominiums. Accept the Central District Health Letter removing sanitary restrictions and authorize the chairman to sign the plan. This motion is made with the understanding that Valley County Board of Commissioners have the sole discretion to set the level of service. For any public road, the level of service can be changed.
A second.
Got a motion and a second to accept the Tamrac final plot. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. While I'm doing this, Sherry, why don't you announce the next one?
Next on our agenda is an action item to adopt the Drop Tyne Meadows final plot.
This one was just a subdivision lot that was split in two so that his son could have a parcel.
And I would move to approve the final plot for Drop Tyne Meadows subdivision, approve the development agreement, acknowledge the sanitary restrictions are satisfied, acknowledge the shared well and water line easements, and authorize the chairman to sign the development agreement and the plot. This motion is made with the following understandings, that only one wood burning device will be allowed in the new residence. The potter lane is a public road, and the Valley County Board of Commissioners have the sole discretion to set the level of service for any public road. The level of service can be changed. The Ken's Place is a privately plotted private road, previously plotted private road, and Valley County has no responsibility thereto.
Second it. Got a motion and a second.
Drop Tyne Meadows.
Drop Tyne.
Drop Tyne Meadows, final plot. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And the next one on our agenda, the Gold Fork Reserve final plot.
This is the development agreement that we're going to have to sign and be notarized.
So we need a notary, Doug?
Right behind you. Gabby came out.
Let's see, she's so quiet.
On this one, on the development agreement, my understanding is we're just accepting public, private, or rather.
Your what?
Right away. If I remember right.
This is everybody's signature?
Let me take it up there.
Yeah, all three of you. That's for, for selling Drop Tyne. Yes. One of them.
Oh, I can read it.
Sounds good.
And the Gold Fork Reserve subdivision, I move to approve the final plot for Gold Fork Reserve subdivision. Validate hideout RD, hideout CT, and refuge LAN as private roads that shall be listed in the official road name list and on the official road maps. Approve the development agreement and authorize the chairman to sign, acknowledge the declaration of installation of utilities. Approve the septic drain field easement agreement and authorize the chairman to sign. Accept 2.31 acres of deeded public right of way for Gold Fork Road and validate it as public right of way. Acknowledge the sanitary restrictions that have been satisfied. Acknowledge the master declaration of covenants, conditions, easements, and restrictions. Acknowledge the declaration of fire standards, acknowledge the declaration of private roads, acknowledge the declaration of shared driveway and utilities easements, acknowledge the declaration of covenants, conditions, restrictions, and easements for Gold Fork Reserve subdivision and authorize the chairman to sign the plan. This motion is made with the understanding that Gold Fork Road is a public road and the Valley County Board of Commissioners has the right to set and change the level of service and that Valley County has no responsibility for the private roads as listing.
Second.
Before we vote on this, Cinna, this is the one where we had septic drain filled in the right of way?
Drain filled, yes. And there's an easement in the packet that was created by the developer. And so part of this approval is you're giving easement to Edith Sweet.
So just as long as easement's on the plot?
Easement is not on the plot. The easement is further down the road. But there's an easement document that was created so the board could give an easement. That was just part of their tasks.
Whether or not it's on the plot or where, just as long as that's been dealt with, that was the issue that I had with this was.
Yes, there is an easement that was prepared and a picture of the location of the drain filled by Dan Liam serving. And part of that is approval by the board.
Edith Sweet, that's right.
Another somewhere in here.
That one will also need a notary. So we got a motion and a second to approve the Gold Fork Reserve final plot. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. You got the easement?
Right here. And what, do we have the Drop Tyne so I can put my packet back together?
She's coming with it.
I don't want to get all these documents mixed up.
Don't want to get that mixed up. So this is.
That goes with this one.
You do assistant in here, girl.
Wait on that. Well, patience is a virtue and we should use some.
You stepped in what?
I said patience is a virtue.
Patience is a virtue.
It's either virtue or curse. I'm not really sure which it is.
Depends on what they.
And else is the. Easement. Here's the development agreement that will need to be notarized also.
Well, I can sign the, well, let's wait, let's wait.
Fifteen minutes, bud.
What? Final plots don't take very much time.
Just more, yeah.
That's the ear end rush.
Yeah, let's look at the security. Four sec, here's.
One up.
This is you.
Yeah. I'll send him an email.
We can see if we have, we'll discuss that Commissioner Martin. I bet there's something in the works. I'm not very sure.
All scanned in these days. Scan and go.
There's that. There were 27, I guess.
Look at you, those two pictures they had. They'd get them hung out in the hallway.
Yeah, they're down in the clerks where the ramp is.
Thanks Gabby for your help.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on. We're a little bit late, but we're catching up with everything in life.
That's one of those on the table.
Thank you, listeners.
Bet.
Nope.
Jim's been waiting years for that one.
Jim's been waiting.
He can hardly wait to get it.
Okay, our next agenda item is not an action item, this is just a discussion on the Cascade Senior Center. I guess I could start then since I've been kind of in the soup with this. As you guys know, we haven't had any senior meals since about the first of August. We had some issues with some health issues with the cook and her husband, so things were kind of shut down and stopped for a while. We contacted a board member, Rick Cole, here months ago now, find out what's the plan is, if we're gonna get it restarted. We had a lot of requests with seniors for the meals and he thought that maybe they could get something together. I think this was about October, nothing ever seemed to happen. Kept in communication with Mr. Cole and Cindy and I think a little bit with the other board member, Bob Clayton, and we thought maybe they could get it, some meals going again, and it just never seemed to happen. My last communication with Mr. Cole was about a month ago now, and he said that the board got together and they decided that they didn't want to have to be a part of it anymore. They all basically wanted to quit as board members. And so I began the process of working with the Calvary Church, who the county has a lease with on the north half of the facility. They are very interested in taking over the function of the community center, the senior center, into doing those two meals a week and the special meals at different times of the year, to reestablish Meals on Wheels and to also establish the AAA funding area on aging, funding that the board used to run on. We kind of ran into a hitch with Idaho Code as far as leasing that facility entirely to a religious organization, and so our esteemed prosecuting civil attorneys have come up with a different plan, and I'd like Arnie and Oak to come up, and if you guys can kind of explain what the, what the plan is, how we can kind of get over that hurdle with the state code, and then we're kind of gonna go from there and see what happens. But we spent a great deal of time trying to bring this program back and have had a lot of things go wrong. So I'll turn it over to you, Arnie.
All right, thank you, Chairman. So part of the problem we have is that we have to maintain a separation of church and state. We can't be seen to be, or the county cannot be seen to be giving favors or subsidizing another church's rent or location. And we need to be, also be careful about entanglement, not contracting with a church to provide services that the community or government normally would provide. One way, so there are a couple of ways around that. One would be to create a completely different organization that would be responsible for the building, and they would then be the landlords for the building. But then we've got some issues about renting out government, about having somebody else manage our property. Other potential solution is to reconstitute the, a new senior center board, have them take over the responsibilities for the senior center. Another option would be to transfer the Cascade Community Center building to the city of Cascade and let them provide senior services in the community, just like happened in the city of McCall.
Have we had any discussion with the city?
I have not had any discussions with them yet. We're waiting for further guidance from the local county commissioners of what we're, which way you wanted to proceed.
Well, and I've kind of felt all along that if we reconstituted a new board, that maybe even some of the members of the church were on that board, we could still continue with some of these programs that everybody wants. Cindy, I know you're on that board, would you like to come up and explain where you're coming from? Please state your name for the record.
Cindy Rich.
Thank you.
So I was not any part of the group that wanted to quit. I was put into a position of not knowing, and I, I don't think this should end here. We've got senior citizens here. These, these, they come to lunch twice a month, or twice a week. We get between, in the winter time, we get between fifteen people per lunch and in the summertime, up to sixty people per lunch. There are two board members at the moment, I'm sorry, three board members at the moment. One is Rick, one is myself, and one is Michaela, who's the young lady who's cooking for us.
So Bob Clayton is not on there anymore?
Bob Clayton is not on the board anymore.
And Rick is still a board member?
He is still a board member. I've asked him to step aside. I'm going on vacation, I'm leaving tomorrow. I will be gone until the end of January, and at that point, when I come back, I've asked him to step down from the board, and we are seeking new board members.
See, the last I heard is that he resigned, that happened a month or so ago. And that's my issue is, I should have probably, should have gotten something on paper. Okay, so, go ahead, continue on.
So the senior center is an important part of this community. It allows people, whether they're seniors or non-seniors, to come and get out of their houses, to socialize, to be involved with things in the community, to know what's going on in the community. It provides a healthy meal most of the time, unless it's chicken fried steak, and it provides a healthy meal.
What's wrong with chicken fried steak? Bees guy now, be careful.
It's just not quite the healthy one yet. You know, it's healthy meals. The center has struggled for the last four or five years. Bingo was left, was left us less eight thousand dollars a year. That's what they used to pay the center. But still we go on. We closed in September. We were closing for a month so I could get some medical issues taken care of. We would open back up on October first. And then I kept, I kept after Rick, who is the president of the board, to continue doing this, and he gave a song and dance, and this is how we got here today.
Have you reopened?
Pardon me?
Have you reopened?
No, we don't have a lease.
So when you say October first, though, what has, what has happened in that building since October first?
Absolutely nothing.
So you haven't really reopened, then, it's been closed since September.
Correct. We wanted to reopen in October.
This is a really difficult conversation for the commissioners because we are totally in support of our senior population. What we also have to balance is, this is a county asset that county taxpayers are paying for. And so we have to, we have to make sure that whatever's gonna happen there is viable. I mean, hinging this on one person, you could be sick tomorrow, and...
I don't plan on doing this alone.
Okay, well, this has been ongoing. We've been having this conversation since a year ago with Rick. I mean, we signed a one-year lease, but we were looking for board members, looking for participation at that moment in time.
I've been participating there for eighteen months.
Okay.
I've been in there cooking meals and cleaning the floors and...
I see you, and you're, you're definitely giving back to this. You're the one keeping this going right now on a float.
I am, and I refuse to let it go. These guys need a place where they can go and get together, have games, have discussions, whatever it may be, have meals.
I agree with that, but it's not happening right now. So how are we gonna resolve that issue?
We need a new board.
We need a new board, but, you know, there also has to be financial participation. And my parents are involved in a senior center. They're constantly writing grants. I mean, the senior centers struggle, all the senior centers are struggling. Meadows is closed, Council is closed, McCall's is open, but it, it's a struggle. So I, I'm just looking for, how do we, how do we do this and, and make sure that the taxpayers understand that our investment in this is, you know, it's rewarding seniors, that they're actually getting something from it.
If you ask any of them here, they'll tell you they're getting something from it. Up until September, when we shut down for a month, they're getting something from it.
You didn't shut down for a month, that's what I'm trying to clarify. You've been closed for four months, they're not getting anything right now.
Okay, we've been closed for four months because I was told that Valley County Board, the chair people, you guys here, would not renew our lease.
That's absolutely not true.
I was fighting to get it done, and that's why finally I sent a message to Halt, and he called and told me what was going on behind the scenes that I didn't know about.
Yeah, I think our issue as far as the county's concerned is we're getting conflicting information from the original board members, saying, yeah, we're here, no, we're not, we've all resigned. You know, the issue with the bingo was that the paperwork wasn't done, so you guys lost the license. Same thing with AAA funding, the paperwork wasn't applied for every, annually, every year, just didn't get in, and so we lost that funding. So to me, that tells me either we need a new board.
I agree, get a new board.
In the past, how have we done that? Have we gone out through like the Star News and announced? Because I think once we get a new board, then we could probably look at the original lease and resign it and keep it running going the way we've been, which I think would be fine.
Well, what I would like, I mean, when I get back from vacation, I'll go out and let's, I'll figure out a way to get a new board in there.
Back to our legal counsel, and so first of all, I'm not, not in support in any way, shape, or form of turning a building over to the city. This is county taxpayer money. The county taxpayer's been paying for this for years, and to just donate that away, I don't think is a good use of the county taxpayers' funds. Secondly, we have discussed selling the building, let the church buy it, and then the senior center could actually sublease from them. Our problem with that is, if we sell the building, you have to do it at auction, so there is no guarantee the church would win. There may be other people in the community that also would like that facility. And so, you know, that's an option that makes the county taxpayers whole and provides funding for the county to move on with another use. And that other use could be a portion of a senior center. We could build a different building along with apartments, housing, you know, invest in different infrastructure. I know that seniors are struggling, but you have to, I, I represent the McCall area. The McCall area has nothing to do with Cascade Senior Center. Meal does the Donley area, you know, nothing to do with the Cascade Senior Center. We support seniors, but I have to find a way that I see that you're gonna be successful moving forward, because only having, you know, two or three people on a board is not sustainable. As we age, I can't do nearly as much as I used to do. So there has to be a vibrant board that actually is doing the work necessary. We can't continue to do the utilities anymore, we can't continue to snowplow all the buildings, we can't continue to be the sole source of all the funding on that building. That's not fair to the taxpayers of Valley County.
Cindy, do you know, do you guys have bylaws?
I do.
Could you maybe grab or dig those out, find them and send them to us, maybe our legal? I think the bylaws are gonna determine, one of the things that keeps going through my mind is, it's a burnout job. It seems like on the board, a lot of people have come and go over the years, they're kind of self-appointed, and I'm thinking maybe what I need to do is increase it from a three-member to a five-member board, so we have more folks involved, making sure stuff happens every week. And I think that, you know, whether the county goes out for an ad in the Star News or, or the senior center goes out for an ad for Star News, but I think a whole new group of people coming in there with some energy could turn that thing around. And I'm not trying to belittle your efforts because you've, you've been the one that's kind of kept it alive these last few months, and we've had a lot of conversations on how we can make this a viable thing again in Cascade. And if you could get those bylaws, I think that would determine if we can go to a five-member board. I'm looking at some people in the audience now, I think would be great board members, and we've already had some discussions, and, and I think that's...
I said they're all invited.
They're all invited.
Even with a five-member board, though, really, they're, we need to see a budget that has sustainability in it, because that is something that, McCall, the only way McCall is successful is they have a coordinator. They've hired somebody, they have enough people participating that it pays for it financially, along with the grants that they're able to receive. So even with a five-member board, that doesn't make it financially sustainable.
Well, no, but I think, you know, it's pretty apparent that three can't do it. It's not been happening in the past, hasn't happened for quite a few years in a row.
Correct.
And so I think we need to re-energize different folks on that board. I think it should be bigger, so you have more help, and let's try and fire it back up and apply for the grants and do the AAA funding and do the Meals on Wheels and get all those things coming back again, because nothing's happening right now.
Who is able to help with the grants?
As for within your board?
There's lots of people that file for grants, Cindy, all over.
Okay.
Different organizations, I mean, nonprofits, there's a lot of grants out there, and it takes work. And I think, you know, honestly, you know, it's been shoved on you over the last three years and you're kind of burnt, and it's not fair to ask one board member to do all that work. You know, I've thought about, do we need to come up with some way to hire a coordinator? I wonder where we're gonna get that money from?
I'd like to see that happen.
Just, I think the county's doing way more than its share of that facility right now, where, as Harry said, we're keeping the building alive, we're plowing the snow, we pay the power bill, which was six hundred and fifty bucks last month, and we give you guys eleven thousand a year to help pay for the cook. Now, if you feel like you need more, then maybe you need to come back to this board at a future date and talk to them about, you know, you can't get a cook for a thousand dollars a month. Can't do it, I don't know. Don't be afraid to ask, I guess what I'm saying.
Okay.
Whatever we do here, we have to do for other senior centers also with the county, so...
Another option that has come up for the meal part of it is, it's been discussed at the American Legion. I am an American Legion member of the Auxiliary. I have the permits and stuff to be a cook and manage the kitchen. I'm part of the kitchen staff on Friday nights down there. And so it's been talked about.
As far as the two meals a week?
They were talking two meals a month. I think they wanted to see how it would go.
Well, that is something that, you know, could be a good conversation for the community. I just look at the community as a whole. There are, there's this community center with the seniors, a portion of it, there's another community center, and then there's the Auxiliary. So there's a, how could we collaboratively and cohesively build a program that could be sustainable for everyone? That would, that would be a good conversation.
Well, and I think to me, one of the more aspects that's most important, that's been dropped, is the Meals on Wheels, because we have a lot of seniors unable to leave their homes, and we need to figure out how to get those people a lot of less and make sure they get a meal twice a week at least. And I think, I hope that comes back.
Meals on Wheels? Meals on Wheels. We do the cooking. We pay for the cook. We pay for the other support help. All Meals on Wheels does is bring the food in. Everything past that point is all put onto the center.
I understand. You guys pay the cost to do the food and to cook the food and all that, but Meals on Wheels delivers it, or does someone else?
No, 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 no. No, they wash their hands once, once you do it. That delivery is up to the center. We reached out to the community for shut-ins when we did it. We did it for two months. Also, Meals on Wheels takes all the donation money that seniors give for the center. So, we can't afford a cook, and we can't afford to clean up. We're, we're at a loss at that point. I know Meals on Wheels is good in some places, but I do not believe it's good here.
Cindy, what's your actual participation on those lunches? How many, on average, show up?
On average, through the year, I would say there's thirty.
And what are you charging per meal?
It's a suggested donation of seven dollars. We get our food right now from the Idaho Food Bank. And from the Idaho Food Bank, a special program for seniors only, where we cannot put a price on the food, and this is suggested donation only. And if somebody wants to come in and not pay, that's perfectly fine. That's what the deal is when you sign up with the programs.
So, Cindy, have they? Because I know that church was wanting to get involved and help out. Have you talked to?
I have talked to the pastor. And we talked the other day, and he's offered up his ideas. And I'm good with the ideas that he has, but it doesn't include the meals.
Doesn't include meals?
So, since we've been shut down, I, we, like I said, the American Legion was approached to do the meal program, and they were approached at two meals a month. And would they go through it? They're gonna put it, hopefully put it to the legionnaires next month and see what they have to say about it.
Yeah, it sounds like that comes up a little short by what?
Pardon me?
It comes up a little short by what you were describing of two meals a week.
Yeah, it does.
A month down there.
No, and we're, you guys are operating on two meals, you know, a week.
I think they could do, I can't speak for them personally, but I think two meals a month, if that goes through, would be fine. Because we have talked to the church, and they are offering different things that we could do at the church to get the, get the seniors together and have some time with each other. And coordinate some activities.
Well, and that's the other issue is that, uh, I know there's a foot clinic that comes in once a month. And then I think the fit and fall has been canceled at the Rec District, and they're looking for a home again as well.
We've got the equipment that we, we did fit and fall for years. I have the chairs and the, that stuff there, and it, step right into it again.
So, it sounds to me like all we just need is some new board members, and this thing could take right off and, right on going. To me, I don't know. I know the church has expressed interest in renting the whole facility, and they've said, "We'll do meals two times a week. We'll do Meals on Wheels. We'll do all of that stuff." But like Arnie said, there's a real fine line between government and religious that we can't violate that, or the thing will collapse.
So, my question is back to our legal counsel. We already have a contract with the church.
From the north half?
Well, I know, but it's still a contract with the church. It's not probably fair market value. So, therefore, we can't lease to the church. We have a greater conversation here than just the seniors.
These are things that I think would have to be worked out. Um, is there anyone else over here who wants to talk or add anything to this conversation?
I will. I'm Sandy Lalo. I was on the Board of Directors for the Senior Center for over ten years when Cindy came on. And she's done a tremendous job with what she's had to work with. First of all, she had major support from Area Three. It was like five something a meal, I think it was. That was eliminated. Uh, Area Three paid the director, the manager, whatever. They quit doing that. So, there was a major, major. She had support from, uh, the county, which was reduced. And, I mean, everybody was reduced, and I'm not blaming anybody. But other community support was reduced also. So, here she is with a new job, and she did a great job. She really did, with what she had to work with. When they first took over, the whole, our whole board left at the same time, except me. I stayed on, not on the board, but as an advisor. I came in to tell them, you know, if they had questions or whatever. Then I had a major health issue, and I was gone for three months. And, uh, then I came back on, was gonna help them, had another big one, and I was gone. And I just cannot be depended on. I will help her any way I can. I have written successfully grants. I had, got two five thousand grants for the Senior Center. And, uh, willing to do that, but until there's some stability. And I agree, you need, you need a board there, but when they took over, nobody had any experience being on a board. Cindy was the only one that knew anything about cooking, and she got Kayla in, who's, and together, they did a wonderful, wonderful job. They built that business up immediately, almost overnight from, you know, ten to thirty. And I did a wonderful, wonderful job. And I, I cannot go on the board because of health issues. I cannot be dependable. But I'll do anything I can to help. That's it.
Thank you very much. Chuck, do you have anything you want to add?
I was gonna shut up, but I couldn't help myself.
Come on up, Chuck.
Is that fine if I can stay here?
No, you need to cover the mics. Everybody can hear you. The President of the world is listening.
Right here, I can hear anybody. My real name is Seda Titus, but everybody in my family and friends know me as Chuck. Okay, and I've been going to the senior center. I do volunteer. But as you know, cooks and volunteers are one in a million in our county and every other county. So, we do need some of our seniors to, if they can, step up, but our average age is over seventy. So, our limitations are limited. Oh, but it's a great community and stuff, and I volunteer whenever I can and when I can. So, and I would be depended on and stuff, so, yeah. I think our thing is very much needed, and we'd like to know a whole lot more. I'm not on the side of grants or anything like that, but willing to learn, to see what we have to do or what we can't do with the building. Thanks. Thanks for your...
Well, Mr. Chair, I think we just need to hold on this conversation and let the seniors regroup, come back to us, you know, give you sixty days to try and get back to your house.
I'll be gone for sixty days.
Give you ninety days. You know, something can, you know, hopefully transpire while you're gone.
Hey, listen, listen, I know we wanna move on, we're, we're late, but we can work it in. Tom, you had your hand up. I'd really like to hear from you. And then you're next.
Uh, thank you. Tom Reinhardt, CEO, Cascade Medical Center. Uh, Cascade Medical Center has a little bit of a dog in this fight. Uh, we, first of all, view the Community Center and Senior Citizens, Inc. as an important part of public health in our area. Uh, Cascade, uh, has a significant senior population. Our average age in, in Cascade is much higher than even Donley or Valley County. Uh, and seniors are an important asset in our community, and it's something we care very much about, as, as do you. Cascade Medical Center, uh, when there are lunches that go on, we send nurses over to take blood pressure checks as a way to identify problems in advance before they become more serious. Uh, we, we sublease, I'm not sure that's the right term, but the church lets us use their space once a month for a foot clinic, where we see twenty to thirty folks and provide foot care. That space is needed, because we don't have a space large enough at the hospital. And we do that in partnership with St. Luke's. Uh, it works really well. And, and the hospital is part of a informal, loosely knit-together group called the Healthy Aging Planning Network here in Cascade. The city participates, EMS participates, Senior Citizens, Inc. board members in and out sometimes participate. But through that group, we look for opportunities to help seniors age in place with dignity and grace. That's what we call it. We want to give our seniors the opportunity to live independently, which is what we all want, as long as we possibly can. That's why the hospital bought a van, and we are purchasing another van, to be able to bring seniors to their medical appointments and that kind of thing. So, all of that said, we haven't been actively participating in the board, uh, but we are certainly interested in helping. Uh, if a board is reconfigured, I think that there are stakeholders who may be interested in helping be part of that effort. Uh, the, the hospital would be interested, and perhaps other stakeholders like the city uh, would also be interested in being part of a reconfigured board, if that helps. Uh, and through those stakeholders, we might be able to bring resources for grant writing and other efforts to keep the senior center viable and an important part of our community.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate that. You had your hand up? You okay? So, it sounds like we kinda got a plan. I guess, short-term, we need to look at the bylaws. Can you get those for us? We don't have that. How many you can have on the board? If you have any folks that wanna be on the board, I would suggest we start that process of getting them nominated, whatever that, however your elections are, are done. And let's load it back up with some new people and see if we can keep going kind of the way we've been.
Okay.
Does that work?
It does.
And I'm assuming the, anything with the church would be just postponed until we see how this works. Does that work with everybody? Okay? And we're not gonna give up.
Thank you.
So, before you reopen, we do need to sign a lease agreement, so all of the insurances are in place. Uh, maybe we do it a shortened lease to see how your board comes together and how it functions.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I'd like to see the viability. You bet. Right now, we don't have a lease.
We wanna see if it, we wanna see it happen. We really do.
So, right now, without having a lease, all of our stuff is there.
That's fine. We're not, we're not gonna do anything with it. We're gonna give you the time that we need.
Thank you.
Just when you get back, but I would not want people in there unless we do have a lease, because that protects the county also, as far as liability and that type of thing, so...
I am gonna have, um, Michaela, who is our chef, cook, come down. We had a freezer go out. And since we're going to be down for a while longer, I'm gonna have us, have her transfer the food in the pantry that our roots could get to and put it in the freezer and keep it safe.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
And then we'll work on some legalities on our end, too, so...
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, our next agenda meeting is an executive session, so we're gonna have to kick everybody out of here. I'm gonna make a motion. We go into an executive, right, who codes seventy-four-two-zero-six-one-D. This is indigent in charity. So, we got a motion and a second by roll call, please?
Thompson, aye.
What, aye?
That's for Guy and Doug. We're gonna be in, looks like about eleven-ten.